Good morning, Miss Manager. Are you all ready?
We are ready for the lengthy meeting this morning, sir. Three quick, well, two quick items and then the long item. I want to give you a management update first of all, and then Tim will have Kate give us an overview of the, of the public forum for Thursday night. It's a high-level overview, so you guys know what to expect when you walk into that. And then, most of the time this morning, the rest of the time will be spent with Missy Bruckner from Wichita State and her team talking through the next step of the strategic planning. So, you'll notice that the seats are different today. Mike's going to be out of sorts the rest of the day because he's on the opposite side of the table, but you'll also notice that we have a new Assistant County Manager sitting next to me, who you are familiar with. Tanya is a 14-year county employee. We went through a process and had interviews, and she came out on top. She has a set of tangible skills and a set of intangible skills, which I think make her very unique. She, first of all, she has 14 years of county experience, so she's familiar with the organization. She's had the right kind of assignments. She's been in finance, she's been in communications, she came in as an intern and has worked her way up. She has the formal education, she has an English degree, which makes her a little bit weird. She has a Master's.
You don't like papun also?
Well, yeah. Very easy. We'll keep on the effort.
I guess it proves your point.
She has a Master's in Public Administration, which is what we, what we look for in that position. And mostly, she's a known entity to you all. You've seen her work, she's spent time with you, you know the kind of work she produces, and it's exceptional. Her intangible skills are, she is, she's got a great family, she is very passionate about this city and county, that's important to me, and it should be important to us. She has good relations within this county and over at the city of Wichita. She has worked with everybody in this staff, and amazingly, everybody likes her, so that's important too. And she's also a critical thinker and is not scared to tell me, or Tim, or Rusty, or David, or Mike when we are wrong, and we need that chemistry in this, in this, in this team. So, she is, will be fully effective next week after you guys leave the agenda, but we're putting her to work early. And then, Tim takes on the role now Deputy County Manager. He is still going to be over at Public Services yet, but if I am not here for some reason, then other team will watch the county, and if he's not here, then Tanya will watch the county, and if she's not here, then Rusty watches the county. So, we have, the team is pretty much assembled now and will, and will be able to move forward. So, any questions on that?
Any questions? Congratulations.
Where'd you get your earrings?
Cold. Okay.
I would be fired by someone for your earrings.
Bring us back to county business, please.
Happily. So, this Thursday at 6:30 PM, we will be at the Cargill Learning Center for the public forum on wind and solar energy operations. We'll have folks signing in to speak before the event happens, and that way, we can keep some order during the public forum. We're going to start with the Chairman providing a welcome and overview, and then, a current environment recap with Dale Miller and Mark Clark, followed by the Q and A portion of the public forum for public comment, and that will be moderated by me. We're thinking about three minutes per person to speak, and then, the Chairman will wrap it up. So, that's what we've got so far, and we're planning for a healthy and robust conversation, but that's, that's the overview.
Very good. Your opening comments, are you going to say anything that this is a really a land-use issue, it's not a referendum on green energy or any kind of alternate energy, it's really land-use zoning, plating, and so forth?
I'll make sure to do that.
Thank you.
Will we be stating, will the questions be answered as they come?
Yes.
Yeah?
No.
Okay. And you'll be facilitating new answers to those questions?
We'll have that, and then, if there's anything that isn't answered or anything outstanding, we'll also have everyone's email address from who signed in and then who just wants additional information, so that way, if there is anything outstanding, we will be able to provide that at a later time once we have the answer.
And is there a way to capture all those questions with the, like, a short synopsis of the answer to publish later for folks if they weren't able to come?
Yes.
We can do that, yeah?
Will it be recorded?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other questions, Kate? All right. Thank you.
Okay, Chairman, that, we'll turn it over to Minnie now, and we, she has a PowerPoint, which you all have a copy of you in front of, and does she have the ability to click from here or how we communicate or what? You got it. So, she'll step us through the next hour and a half or so here of discussion to bring you up to speed on where we're at with the strategic planning process, and then she needs some information from you today. So, with that, Mr.?
Thank you, Tom, Commissioner. Thank you for having us here today. Our process for today really is to be much more informal and interactive, to get feedback from all of you on where we are at. So, everything that's up there is in front of you right here, so that we can follow along with that. I'm going to turn it over to LaShonda, she's going to give the update actually on where we're at, and then, I'll kind of walk you through the questions. The big purpose for today is to really, to share with you what the workings have been, what work has been done with the staff, and to get your feedback and direction on some of these kind of critical questions that set the initial framework for the strategic plan.
I was trying to figure out this here. Contracting, let's make sure. So, we'll go on.
So, as we did say, today, we're really going to try to provide you some insight on kind of a summary from the interviews that we did with you guys at the beginning of the process, talk about how we are engaging with the employees, think that that was one of the components that really is driving the strategic plan, is making sure that we have employee and community input. We'll walk you through what has happened so far in our K-POP sessions, as well as some of the working meetings we've already, we've already administered, and then talk about next steps, and then gain some of your feedback on the information that we share on today. So, we had Commissioner interviews at the beginning of the process, there were 12 questions that we asked each of you, and in a general theme forum, there were several issues or thoughts that rose to the top. Building trust within the organization, community, partners, and residents was one of the highlights that rose as a theme, and that conversation was really around collaboration and partnership. The second highlight was about rebuilding the Innes, Sedgwick County, and that was really talking about building confidence and trust, and building relationships within the community, as well as resetting the stage around gaining respect from other communities and leaders, as well as building confidence in government as a whole. The third highlight is around engagement of diverse voices, and there was conversations about how do we ensure that we are getting feedback from all of our constituents, how do we do that in effective ways, and how do we make sure that the different perspectives are being, are being included as a part of the conversation that we're having about the work that we're doing at Sedgwick County. The other, the other theme that really rose to the top was about consolidation of services, and that was around looking at the model that was used for the consolidation of M, A, B, C, D. They're going to run them together. And looking at that as a model to replicate ideas on how do we consolidate services, should we look at consolidating government, and really thinking about having an honest and tough conversation and not allowing it to just be a line item. The fourth one was about creating a stable workforce, and this was an internal and external conversation about making sure that as a community, we're prepared for the businesses that are coming into our community, that we have a workforce that will be available for them to take those jobs, as well as making sure we have a stable workforce internally. So, looking at lines of communication, looking at employee morale, looking at benefits, and competitive compensation for our employees. And then, the last was enhancing communication, and again, that was both on the internal and external side of the conversation, and making sure that as an organization, that you were communicating effectively to both the constituents and employees, and also having a way for them to communicate back to you. If we move to the next slide, this really talks about the critical issues that rose to the top in those conversations. Some of them are pretty much, some of them are the same, but one that really stuck out for us was the conversation around mental health. Every one of the Commissioners talked about mental health from some capacity, and really looking for innovative, innovative solutions or strategies to address mental health in our community, and making sure that we did not take a Band-Aid approach, but really looking at how do we address this and how do we truly make impact in that area. Workforce development, again, was a critical issue, and that was attracting, retaining, and making sure that we can retain our young talent, and how do we prepare them for the workforce, as well as how do we keep them in our community so that they are not leaving our area. Quality of place and cultural attractions came up as a conversation, and this conversation really was around making sure that there was more of a community approach and being the leader in that, and not looking at issues in a silo, in a siloed lens, and making sure where the county had the opportunities to lead in those discussions that the county did show, and identifying where the footing in the place would be for Sedgwick County in the role of creating a better quality of place for our community. Many conversations around key infrastructure projects, making sure that those things got done over the next three years, and then staffing has been rose to the top about morale, benefit packages, and lines of communication.
So, and on this, we tried to pick out the topics that we heard consistently with all five of you, and there's certainly some specific issues that, as individuals you brought up, but these were the themes that we thought were consistent and talked about the most. Any feedback from you of something you don't see here that you want to make sure that we would highlight or bring forward to staff as we move through some of the goals and strategies?
So, how would, how would these, excuse me, how would, do you have a chance to knock some of these off of the staff leadership, or is it just us only?
Need their feedback on this?
Yeah. Would that, or that you're going to get into that?
That's kind of, yeah.
Okay.
A lot of consistent issues, so, all right, we're starting.
Okay. Thanks.
We had a question for feedback from you, that just hopefully sounds familiar, I guess in here, it's surprising to you, any, any clarifications needed?
So, that moves us into doing the work with the employees, and so, Sedgwick County is a large employer, and so, in order for us to do this, what we did was, we created five work teams, and you'll see the departments that fall under each of the work teams, and so, these teams have the opportunity to come together around the different areas of the strategic plan that we'll be talking about, and so, they will, they have identified leaders from their organizations to come and be a part of these work teams to help employ the building of the strategic plan, and so, this is what's really to give you an idea of the number of those that are involved, how we are including each of the departments within the structure, and then, we'll talk a little bit more later about how we're going to include the individual employees in the process.
So, these work teams are meeting approximately four to five different times to help pull this information together, so they've had a full round of meetings to talk about mission, vision, and values, and then, we just finished up the work talking about goals and critical issues. We're not quite ready to report on that, but wanted to come and share with you what we had down so far in mission, vision, and values. These sessions are somewhere around two to three hours, and we kick it off, and then we make them do all the work, and so, that's kind of our process for, for leading this effort for that. So, we'll just jump right in. The first conversation was really for them to think about the organization as a whole. So, while we will break down areas and our nest around about public safety or human services, this first set of questions was really to think of Sedgwick County as an organization. And we looked at mission, vision, and values with the process, and so, the first question we asked them was really to think about when Sedgwick County is at its best, and we asked them to think of a very specific issue or a very specific time when they thought Sedgwick County was at its best, and we wanted them to hold that framework, and we tried to get some consensus around work groups about what that would be for them, and so, these pictures that you have in front of you are referenced at what we heard the most, and so, these are, you know, approximately 30 to 40 different conversations that we heard, and so, Innes Bank came up often as an example of when Sedgwick County was at its best, there was a lot of pride around what that did. The one right below that was in disaster relief efforts, so if you think about the Oak Lawn tornado or major flooding issues, that they felt like Sedgwick County was at its best when it was responding to that. The picture of the employees and public safety, there was a lot of examples of when the county took on really tough, multi-pentile issues that are hard to solve, and so, looking at maybe some things with mental health, or things that the sheriff has done within the jail, or addressing issues in comp care which have, you know, dual diagnosis and how to get people to take responsibility for that. Or it can be looking at things going on in Human Resources and trying to address some of the staffing issues, but these are examples where they felt that Commissioners and staff were working together to solve difficult internal policy type of questions. And then, the last part of the elephant was a lot of pride around the zoo, and some of the cool projects that have been down out there, and especially the elephant's got a lot of conversation because it had, it was such a public conversation and some concern, right, and how you work through that. So, those are examples, so I don't know if there, if this resonates with you, do you think this is when Sedgwick County is at its best, would you like to point out something else that you think when Sedgwick County is at its best?
Well, I agree, the items that you've shown here are some of the important tasks that we've taken on in the past. We are looking at some of the same things towards the future with the zoo, especially, so, our public service that takes care of people, I'm not sure that we've really picked up in, at least in these four instances, the things that we do that are public service-oriented with Sheriff's Department, with EMS, reacting to CDDO, you know, there's so many people have individual needs, and we're out meeting individual needs, and people don't recognize, I don't think, those little things that we're doing out there every single day that's impacted people's lives.
Exactly. I think when Sedgwick County is at its best is mostly based around people, I mean, we're people serving people, and, you know, when I look here, I, I mean, I love the zoo, don't get me wrong, but it's people who run that zoo, the people who patronize that zoo, you know, that's, that's the thing that I would say, you know, I think it's more based on people.
They talked a lot about the impact of coming together, that all of these efforts really were usually multi-departmental, lots of them involved outside agencies, you know, to get and tackle a big, big project, so.
So, much of what Sedgwick County do, does is behind the scenes, that people don't recognize every single day. You pick up the phone and dial 911, you just expect someone to show up, you don't know all those steps that are happening in between getting 911, that's there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and all of the different services that are provided just from picking up phone call, that's just one example, but I don't think people recognize what the impact that we have, that it's just there.
Right. Yeah.
And most recently, I think that interchange at Kellogg in 235 is a wonderful example of Sedgwick County at its best, because we partnered on that particular one with KDOT and the feds and what public works did, and I don't really see roads, eh, on here, and I know that's not a people thing, but I know that particular junction, particularly for Davis District and my district, is critical.
Right.
And, and for our whole region, just the most recent example.
Yeah. And a great example of multi-year effort, Kate made.
And multi-agency.
There are no.
I would, I would just agree that what Michael just said about working with multi-agencies, other governments, in this case, the state, the feds, and there's other cases where I like that.
Kate, you all talked about the partnerships and the importance of, you know, bridging those gaps, and I think that definitely, that's what we heard from staff as well. Any other feedback? It was a fun conversation, it got, you know, folks started off in a way to really think about the pride of the work that is done here, and so, I thought that was a good process. So, I'm turning the page there, I am not paying attention enough. Okay. So, when we asked them then to have that in mind about when we, when Sedgwick County was at its best, we then walked through some very specific questions, so when you were at your best, who did you serve? What did you do to serve, or what were the actions? How did you go about doing that? And then, why did you do this work? And of all the questions, the why question is the most important there, because we really wanted to think, why is this the work of Sedgwick County and not of State Kansas, or not a nonprofit, or not a city organization? And so, really trying to help focus them in on that. The next set of questions that we talked about was really the vision, and the mission is really focused on the what and the why, you know, you do this type of work, but the vision is how do we inspire for what we want to do? How do we create that vision or that aspiration of where we want this organization to go? And then, the last set of questions we asked was really around values and cultures, and trying to get those that values speak to you no matter what, no matter who, no matter where, this is how we're going to behave, this is how we're going to treat each other, this is what we're going to hold important. And we also wanted to get at the question of where do they want to work? Because in this day and time where talent is the highest thing that all of us are trying to attract and keep and move forward, what kind of a place do people want to work in and feel good about? So, those are the questions that we asked from, from the process. So, on the who question, you've got a couple of things in front of you. One is just the word cloud effort, that shows what the most common themes were when we run it through the software, but we also handed out to you a one-sheet page, which is a summary of all five work groups, and this went from, you know, 20 pages of notes down to back and front pages of notes, so there's, there's a lot more work from your staff that went into this, we just had to capture what we heard were the most common themes. So, what we'd like to do in these next questions is really get your feedback on what resonates with you. So, on the who, we heard about Sedgwick County, we heard about citizens, residents, employees, visitors, and overall business community with who they serve in, when Sedgwick County was at its best, and there's certainly some other, you know, populations within that that have specific interests, but when you think about who you serve, what resonates with you, what makes the most sense that you think of when you're thinking of your mission?
I think you captured it here, I mean, for me, it's my constituents, and, I mean, really, yes, I do represent 100,000 people, but I make decisions for the whole county, and so, I, I think this is, I can't think of any other buckets that you would put in here.
The only other bucket I might add would be other governments, because we, we serve folks in each of our cities, our townships.
Great.
Yeah. Anybody else have anything?
When we got to the next question of what do you do, this becomes a little trickier to, you know, trying to break down, because we're trying to figure out, especially when the work is going well and things are clicking along and it's feeling good that we're, you know, in that groove of performing the work, what does that feel like? And so, they use language about we are connecting and collaborating with the community, and so, really partnering with our residents, or partnering with, you know, other nonprofit organizations, local governments, but we are, we are in this together type of feeling. They talk about facilitating change, and that's not easy work of, and, you know, how do we get from where we are to maybe where we want to be, and that's a part of that, the county serves that role as facilitator of that change. And then, gathering input, and there's a lot of conversation about just connecting with people, but also with resources and research, and trying to gather as much facts and information to move forward, and with pride in the decision-making. And then, the last kind of the what was improving quality in life in Sedgwick County, Sedgwick County, and so, those were kind of the big parts we heard, there's some more under mission of what here, that, again, would appreciate your feedback on, you know, what it is you think the work is that Sedgwick County should be doing, and what words or language we should be using as part of their mission.
The first word I'm looking for under what we do, the one, number one thing that I do is listen, and so, I think adding that word in there, I think it's our job to listen to our community so that we can meet their, their need.
Okay.
Well, besides improved quality of life in Sedgwick County, and I think that's critical, but public safety has got to be at the top of our list on anything that we do, so I don't know how we bring that in, but between Sheriff's Department, 911, EMS, Fire District Number One, you know, that's, that's all our top priorities.
I think that you summed up with protect and increase.
Okay. I think the question of if you were sharing, somebody wasn't familiar with your work, right, does that sum up what you would want that image to be of the work you're doing out there? So, the next one is really the how, and this is trying to get people to think just a little bit more about, it's not just doing the work, but it's important about how we go about doing the work, and so, they talked a lot about the communication between a lot of different entities, engagement and partnership, effective leadership, and a lot about removing the barriers and to meet needs, and so, that was, you know, again, you've got a larger summary here about that, but the, the really interesting part was when they're, when Sedgwick County was at its best, how we lay about this was having really tough conversations about big issues, and I thought that was interesting, that that was the feedback from staff, that they have conversations are important to move organizations forward. Feedback on how, things that you would want to make sure, they talked about the mission, about the how part of it.
I think of instead of removing barriers and meeting needs, and I like that, but I'm, I'm thinking of being innovative so that we don't have barriers in the first place, right? We're forward-thinking, we're thinking about how we can be effective, and then, to the communications piece, I was just talking to Tom and somebody else the other day about communicating in an objective, easy-to-understand way, I think, I just don't, I said this to somebody, I don't understand why it has to be so complicated, and instead of downloading somebody with a ton of information that maybe they don't really need because they shut off after the first five minutes, you know, getting people to understand what we do easily.
Have any feedback?
Somehow, we need to say that we can empower our people to be able to do it, that's, we have to give them the power. One thing I've always been taught is that we can delegate the authority to do something, we can't delegate the responsibility, it always comes back to the five of us at the end, but we have to be able to empower the people to be able to do that.
I'd like to add the words open door, respectful, professional, transparent, accountability, I'm sorry, availability, efficiency, necessity.
Okay. Oh, I want to make sure I captured all of that.
I'll do it again. Open door, respectful, professional, transparent, available, efficient, necessity. I'd like to open back up to the who for one minute and add the word CDDO, I think, and that, I would also add, you know, things like, I don't know if it should be down to an agency level here, but it demonstrates, I think, what, who, you know, the who very well, like work release, for example, transitioning people back into community, comp care, I'm not sure if that makes sense here or not, but.
But the bigger point is making sure some of those vulnerable populations have those opportunities.
In other words, in other words, needs-driven, you know, we have people with needs, we've got to be focused on, on who has needs and people are going to help them.
Great. Thank you. Have any feedback? And then the last part of the question was the why. And again, this is, this is the heart of the work here. Why you all ran for office, why you serve, and why your employees come to work every day to do this. I mean, they talk a lot about the community and commitment, improving people's lives. The public relies on this and kind of going to Commissioner Howell's point, that there are, you are meeting a need that others are not going to meet if Cedric County didn't exist, that services, you know, would not be available. And then to really think about being responsible in the use of resources, however we define resources, whether those are dollar resources, environmental resources, human resources, and that, and to solve problems. At the end of the day, you guys are solving problems that exist in our community to make a matter. So that was kind of the focus of the why again. There's a lot more detail in the narrative, but we're trying to kind of pull out what's the big picture from this here. So feedback from all of you.
Well, the why for me is really, I go back to public safety once again. That's still our top priority for the Board of Health, which has to do with public safety. We build the roads that they drive on. We build the bridges they drive on. We've got, as I mentioned before, EMS, fire, sheriff, all these different folks. So the why kind of revolves around public safety as our main responsibility that we have. I kind of like the, your second sentence there, there's a community expectation and responsibility from a de-elected perspective. People I interact with, and then, you know, each of us represent 100,000 people, and 99,000 of them at least just live their life, pay their taxes, and they just expect stuff to be available, 911, EMS. And then you have a small percent that has special attention for whatever could be. So I think that's, our community just would expect responsible government. And that's a big word, but it encompasses all that, so.
I think we have a responsibility to use resources effectively. I mean, yeah, we're going to use the resources, but we have to use them in a good, to be good stewards of our resources. And, you know, I know that we're, you know, creating opportunities or being innovative. I think we have, we have a responsibility to be forward thinking, and I can't say that enough, so I'm probably adding it to all of these. But I just think we have to get out of the same old, same old, business as usual. We have to really think forward as to how we can change things to, if we're just flatlining, right, how can we, how can we improve?
So that's that.
I'm trying to see if there's the right thing to do.
What does that? What was feedback on the why? So creating mission statements is a lot of input to keep boiling it down to get something that is useful for all of you. When you look back through this conversation we've had, is there anything that stands out for each of you that is credible? And is there anything in it that's like, meh, it's not that important, we don't have to include that? So kind of a test on both sides.
I just think understanding that everybody is involved, all voices should have a representation. And that's the reason why I ran, because I wanted people to feel like their voice was important. And I hope that I could continue cultivating that. I think that we all have a responsibility to make sure, just like the first day when I was on the bench, I said, we need to make sure this room feels comfortable. And it's an easy to understand thing. If they need a service, where do they go to get it? And how can they understand how it impacts them?
That's how I'm making sure the accessibility for people as well.
And I think it's important for us to get the message out that we're not trying to be political. I think there's certain people that think that we're too political, where we just seem to be focused on what's our job and not politics, more serving the community. And I think that's at every level, go ahead, it's not just unique here. But we need to, we need to be focused on not being political, but being servant.
I don't know how you agree with them to the four bullets, but they seem pretty, I agree with the bullets. I don't know if there should be more or less, but it looks like you tried to put everything in the four.
On the right track there.
I think, seems like. I like multipliers in there.
It's a very good one. Any other feedback on the who? We are going to take your feedback. We're going to share a little bit, kind of some, you know, options for draft for you as we continue to do this before we, before we finalize anything, but we wanted your feedback up right here. So I'm going to turn it over to the residents. You can talk about vision and values.
So in the vision conversation, it is really talking about the inspiration, how do we inspire to get to where we want to get. Commissioner Cruz, you'll be having, we really talked about this, forward thinking and innovative leadership.
Right on.
All right. Some of the top attributes, you'll see that in your one page here, really talks about forward reaching, being innovative, being progressive, and connected, having innovative leaders, being trusted by the community, being excellent in the service that we provide, becoming a vibrant community of choice, and then being the employer of choice. So become broadly competitive and filled with opportunity. So that is the vision that employees talked about when they see Cedric County in the future. Does that resonate with your thoughts about the vision and how you would like to make progress in moving Cedric County forward?
My only comment would be, I mean, you mentioned the word trust, and I had to look in here to find it. I think we talked about trust right off the bat. We might move trust right after leadership, whatever it is. Yes, so it's not lost in the middle of all the.
Okay.
But it's just my observation.
The one thing I think of when I think of trusted by the community, I want to be trusted by the country. I mean, I want people to know that if they come here, they have an effective governmental body that can help them fulfill whatever they need to happen. So, I mean, you know, just going in the state of Kansas, I mean, we need to be trusted by, we need to be known to be an effective governmental body.
If I was nationally recognized, that's pretty cool.
I don't know. You try to create this conversation on what would make people want to live in Cedric County? What would make people want to work in Cedric County? Share with us what you want to be as an organization.
I agree. I think that that's the direction that we need to be going. We need to be respected here. We need people to say that this is a place that they'd like to live, work, and with a, with a government that works not only with citizens, but with other governments. And I'm not talking just locals, I'm talking state and national.
Is there anything in the comments that you think is really not important to include as we start to develop the vision statements?
I know that this is a lot to cram in, but I think this is the better. Big bulky paragraph. I mean, we live in a 30-second society, it's not less than that. And it's really, I've read lots of mission and vision statements, and if it's longer than two sentences, I'm like, eh. And people can't recite it, and they can't say it themselves, and it really is pointless.
We agree. We told folks this is a 30-second county, but you're trying to get across this.
But still, something, Commissioner Cruz, it has to inspire at the same time.
Ryan? Any other feedback on vision? All right. So the last two questions that we also deal with values and work culture. And truly, the heart of any organization, the only, the only resource that is, that can be increased is the team of folks that you have working for you, right? And so that is really how do we, how do we create that environment where we want to work? And so part of that is talking about values. We talk about, these are the behaviors that we expect, no matter what your role in the county, no matter who you're talking with, no matter what the environment is or the difficult situation you might be having, these are the behaviors that we expect people to demonstrate at all times. And so that's really what we've worked on with the values. These represent the ones that we've heard the most come out of this conversation. And then the work culture, again, how do we retain and have the best and the brightest within our organization? It's really getting at what kind of work culture do you, do you expect to have here? So on the values, conversation focused a lot on the, some of the words that we mentioned earlier on, open and respectful, transparent, high integrity, honesty, compassionate, and respected, knowledgeable professionals in that effort there. So first, we can just stop there. Feedback on the values, the ones that resonate with you on the backside of your group where we, again, put some of that information on here. But these are, these are the ones that we've worked on.
Passion in our business is a, is a real necessity. I mean, we work with folks who need a lot of care, especially in our mental health deals. So that, I would say, I love that word.
And I think some of the comments that Commissioner Howell had under how really fit under values more than under how.
I think it fits under both. I see your point, though.
Anything that we're missing here, anything we talk about, or maybe you see in elsewhere that you really want to highlight?
It kind of probably goes along with respectful, but kindness, just being, getting back to basics.
These are all positive, so it's hard to say which ones don't you want in here, but if there's any that are more important than others, we would want to include that. This feels good? This feels like the organization that you are directing and leading and what you would hope your employees have?
Should we have trust in there?
And I think people are looking for, and I don't know how this is a value, but just stability, which kind of goes with the trust factor, that people can't have trust in an unstable organization. And I think that's been plaguing us for a while.
I agree.
Just being innovative of value. Just being innovative of value.
I think we can definitely put it in here. I think we have to figure out where it fits the best.
Told you I was going to throw it in all of them.
And anything else on values? The work culture is more just to share with you kind of where this, folks are coming from. They talk about values are important, that it's important to have meaningful work in what they are doing, and that we don't lose sight of that, that the work that you all do has impact on people's lives daily, whether they know it or not. And how do we keep reiterating that within, within the workforce? Inclusive and compassionate came up again, family friendly, recognition for the work that is being done out there. And then I think the competitive compensation, especially in this work environment right now, and how do we make sure that we're keeping great souls working in public service? So that was kind of the feedback we heard from them. Any, any questions or thoughts or, you know, work culture you're hoping to create as leaders of this organization?
When you think of mentorship, or advancement, or education, or something that helps people grow in their roles, I think that that should be added as part of our work culture that is just built in, that we know of people who come here, we're going to help them progress in these.
I think you touched on a number of the important areas, pride, excitement, engaging. My background, I came out of an organization that, that's the bedrock of what you do. I know that here we're not going to get in a foxhole and protect our buddy to keep him alive, but that's the culture that's in the back of your mind that you have to have. And so I don't know exactly how to express it, but being very proud of the organization that you work in, and the men and women that you work with every day, and knowing that you'll go to the mat to protect them and to take care of them, I think that's important that everybody recognizes that.
This represents the work through the first series of meetings that we've had. Obviously, you know, hundreds of voices have been heard in this, and why it gives you a chance to respond to that. Any other direction on mission, vision, values that you haven't talked about today or that you wanted to provide input on?
Can you just bring on like a tagline? Instead of Cedric County working for you, serving, whatever it says, are you working on something new for that?
We have not there yet, but we have it on the to-do list. Yes.
I agree. Cedric County working for you sounds okay. That's about all I can say for it. It doesn't, going back to the word inspire, it doesn't inspire anyone, so really.
That came up in a few of the conversations with you, so we have put that on the to-do. I think once we set some of these bigger buckets, then we can kind of come back and work on that and maybe how we're going on some of the communications that have to help us out with that.
But it has to be short.
Yes. First, we to the point. Yeah. Our intentions can get shorter and shorter, so we have to, yeah.
Yeah, I think the working for you sounds, when I first saw it, I thought, this sounds like an eight to five. This is, this is what I do as a job. It sounds limited, that just, working for you.
No pressure.
No pressure. I don't know what the answer is. I'm just being.
We're not there yet either, but we'll get there, we'll get there. Tom, anything you want to share or others, I guess, of staff who have been through the process or where we're at?
I think it's important to mention, just from the last 30 seconds of conversation, that while we're rolling this strategic plan down the rail, we have a strategic communications plan we're going to run parallel to that. So it's important for us to listen to you guys and listen to employees and listen to citizens. And then after that is, a little further down the track, we'll craft the strategic communications plan. But what you guys have said right there as far as our logo, there's a, there is a consensus to change that and things like that. Now, so the employees are in sync with what you're saying here, and we'll, we'll move that down the fight here as we, as we work further toward the end of this, so.
Any other feedback on this or anything from leadership on process or where we're at with this? Any other feedback on this, or anything from leadership on process, or where we're at with anything?
I, I just think it's a positive sign that we're not getting a whole lot of, you know, we, the employees did a good job, they worked hard, spent a lot of time crafting this, and the fact that you guys are in sync makes me feel good that we are on the right track here. But I, I, I do think that some of what you're bringing out today is very, uh, important, and is adding value to this, so.
And I like, uh, on your one-page handout, the very last paragraph, uh, it is, obviously, feedback from your staff, or from staff. Generally, staff indicated a desire, blah, 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 which was all good, but that last sentence is really, if that summarizes what staff is saying, that their hope means there's, they probably don't feel it all the way, but there's a, a hope to, to live this mission, innovate, and make a difference. And that's pretty strong, that's a strong statement at the end.
From outside the structure coming in, we can't say enough great things about the conversations that are going on. Most of the time, we're having to break them up, and, you know, good debate about issues, and that's what you want, people who are passionate about the work, and, and trying to narrow down some of these concrete topics, so.
I appreciate what you've been doing, uh, I go around and talk to other electives, and, uh, and wander around and chat with some of the leaders, and, and, uh, they've been very positive in their feedback on the fact that, uh, someone is coming down and listening to them individually, uh, of what their desires are, to have an input into, to this, uh, project when we're finished with it. I was just down this morning, as a matter of fact, sitting down, talking to the treasurer, and, uh, she was, uh, very supportive, uh, of that there, someone is listening to the other electives in the other departments, rather than just, uh, five of us sitting down, saying that this is what it is.
Well, we're working them hard, so we're glad that, that they are engaged in all of that, so. Um, so we have been working this van, and kind of I think our next step is to take this feedback that we heard from all of you, and start putting together some draft, or some statements that go, go forward. Um, and so, we, we'll share out some information right now, so it's getting started. Um, but now that we have heard from you, this will change, we're just trying to give you some ideas, because this is the idea of the, the, you know, forward of this. Next step will us to take this feedback that you provided us to, uh, reframe what we're handing out. But we just wanted to let you know, this is the direction that we're, you know, we're heading, is to give you an actual statement.
Emily, do you have one more? Oh, wait, disregard. I couldn't get the other two parts, thank you, Emily.
So, these are not what they will be, but it's the format for that, and I don't know if you want to say anything?
Oh, these are, uh, early, early drafts, they're starting to, uh, start the process, get the feedback. They do capture the words, phrases, and language, because we thought, uh, resonated with the participants. But they're not final, slightly, uh, just, uh, three options, the mission statements and vision statements kind of being part of the whole.
And now that we've heard from you, we've taken out some words, we're putting in some words, and pulling that take out of it. This is kind of the next step, will to be bringing you back options for you to, to consider here, so, not today, but the next, next time.
All right. Um, all right, Rashonda, you wanna hit kind of where we're at with, do you want to go over?
Okay. Okay, so what we have been doing the past, um, eight days then, has been talking the, with staff on the critical issues. Some of the same questions that we asked you of what's big facing our community, what are the critical issues facing our organization? Um, so we've met with the work teams again, to start defining what we think are those issues, and the goal is in making sure what you share with us is a part of that conversation as well. So, the next time we come back, um, we will have, have finished that work, along with some initial work on strategies and indicators to do that. So, looking ahead, um, at our next time that we come together, that'll be the, the sessions that we are, are working on. Uh, and getting your feedback on where that work belongs with the, within the organization. There's gonna be some overlap that we're hearing within each of them, um, and so trying to figure out how we, we pull that together. So, that's the work that's being done within the, some months right now that's been started.
And so that gets us to this kind of an update on where we are in the timeline. We are still on schedule. Um, we had a meeting, this week, last week, I think this week, with, um, with the leaders in the organizations to start talking about and training on getting the employee engaged, employees engaged in the conversation. So, we did a training with the facilitators for them to kind of do it themselves, um, around six questions that they will facilitate conversations with their staff on. So, the supervisors and managers within each of the departments and divisions will have the same six questions that they will ask all of the employees. Uh, there is a website that they can go to and log in information, and then all of that information will be submitted to us for us to analyze and summarize in the same fashion as we start to look at what the critical issues are that are facing the organization. So, we'll take the information that we've done with the work teams, the feedback that you've given us through your interviews, as well as the employee feedback, to really frame the critical issues facing the organization as a whole, to build a strategic plan, and then to dive deeper into what are the strategies and solutions that we need to start looking for to make progress. So, that work will have started, and will go through April nineteenth. So, all of the employee engagement will happen between now and the nineteenth of April. And then we will come back and continue to work in work teams through July. And at the end of the work team sessions, Missy talked about earlier, that they have four sessions that they'll go through. We'll get to the last session in July, which will be the plan development, and that's when we will draft the plan. So, we will take all of the feedback from all of the work team sessions that we've had up until that point, to develop the framework for the plan, uh, so that we will have a draft available in August.
And we'll be coming back to you after every critical step, just like we did after this one. Next time we get your goals and strategies, we'll be coming back to see your input if we're on the right track, um, and, and sharing that. So, just want to assure that.
Yes. So, um, after we get the draft plan, we'll have a conversation like this, of course, and then we will go out and do public engagement. And so, we're looking to do public engagement in September and October. We will get the feedback from the community, we will make the adjustments to the plans that are necessary to be reflective of their voices, and then we will have a final plan for your review in November. So, we are still on target, the teams have been working very well in getting, um, to the table and having the conversations and doing the hard work, so, we're very appreciative of that.
Awesome. Out of how, out of the twenty-five to three thousand employees, how many people do you think will be engaged?
You know, the goal is that as you guys make the rounds, next year, that not a single soul will say, "We had no clue what you were doing." So, we're trying to touch literally everyone.
I mean, think about that, we have that many ambassadors out there in our community, talking about how they were engaged in making this plan, and enough to use. That's awesome, thank you for doing that.
No, thank you, thank you too, there's a way that we have, we've given them the tools, and they're doing all the work out there, so. So, I think the questions we're asking focus on, you know, large county organization issues, but also within their work area, asking them questions also about what work should we be doing that we're not, and what work are we doing that we shouldn't be, so I think it's trying to get them to think in, in all directions. Well, that is the end. Our contact is on the back there, if you hear anything, this is your process and your product, and so we want to make sure we're meeting the needs. So, if there's anything that, um, I can do, Rashonda, Sarah, you know, their graduate assistant doing all the work behind the scenes here, uh, making, making this possible, uh, please let us know. But it, we greatly appreciate this opportunity, and thank you for your leadership and the work of all of us there.
Very good, any comments, Miss Michigan? I appreciate what you're doing, uh, this is an important process, uh, that'll take us into the future. It's gonna be the groundwork, framework, foundation, whatever you want to call it, for, uh, everything that we do. So, we need to get it right.
Very good, and you all have an extra hour on your calendars, because that went way faster than.
Yay!
Nothing else, all right? Anybody else in the room have anything before we break up? David didn't say anything?
He kept, he kept hearing "roze" and "breaks," and I've got it.
Very good, all right, have a good day.
All right, thank you.